Okay. Let's go. We'll open the meeting. At seven oh one.
Okay. Let's go.
Yeah, we're getting feedback.
Open the meeting.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
I haven't I haven't done that for a really long time.
I thought you were making a greatest hits album. Approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any? Any item to add or? Subtract? Okay, could I have a motion please for that? Kirsty and seconded by Brenda, all in favor? Good. Yeah, we do have quorum, don't we, Sarah? I think we do.
Yeah, I think with this.
Better to think about that now than at the end of the meeting.
Four. Yeah, there's one, two, three. Yeah, there's four of you.
Right, okay. Adoption of the minutes from the meeting April ninth, twenty twenty five. Does anyone have any amendments that they wish to? Bring forward? Yeah, could I have a? Motion Kirsty second? Okay, that'll be Martin. All in favor? Okay, so that's the rest of us. Next is public comments. And. I see Mr. Paulin is here.
Yes.
And. I'm embarrassed. I don't know who is Xerxes. How?
Xerxes is our new planner.
Okay. He must be golden. Now, Mr. Pullman, I take it you're here in connection with the application?
Correct.
I'm wondering, despite the way the agenda is going, if you would like to hear from Daniel? To have him present the application to the commission and then comment, or do you have something you want to say now?
Yeah, I was just going to say hello and introduce myself really and let Daniel kind of take the floor and present the information to you. And then I'm here for any question or comment afterwards, if that works.
Okay, go for it then.
Okay. Yeah, so I just wanted to say hi. My name is Randy Pullen. I'm here representing my family. We moved to Bowen Island six years ago, and since that time, we've. Spent about four years working through a subdivision and now rezoning with Daniel and other members of council. We've. Worked tirelessly tirelessly to to meet all those conditions that that have been set out and. We had agreements in place that have kind of been delayed significantly by the. The delays in the Cove Bay Water Treatment Plant, which is where we find ourselves today kind of. Needing to apply for rezoning to to keep our project moving forward. So. Again, I'm gonna let Daniel present the information and then we can discuss afterwards if if that works.
Good. Thank you, Daniel. Over to you.
Okay, so I have a presentation on a referral from council. Let me just see. It's actually not okay.
Yes.
Excellent. Alright, so yes, this is an application to amend our land use by law and our official community plan for two properties on Eagle Cliff. So there they are located. They're both quite, you know, sort of narrow and long properties that go up from Eagle Cliff. Up the hillside. And in fact, as you drive by, it's right. If you driven Eagle Cliff, that's right, we're in a quite a tight. Corner and there's houses below the street, and these building sites are actually located closer to the middle of the lot. And or maybe a third of the way up, but they're quite geographically quite high above Eagle Cliff. So if you drive by, you won't actually see the the house or the building site. And these properties are in the settlement residential two zone. And crucially for this application are these different minimum average lot areas for subdivision. And the way the settlement residential two zone is written is that. There are different sizes of lots for if you are served by a community water system, or if you are not served by a community water system. And and these two properties together are about just over three hectares. In area. Just under they're just under three hectares. Let me think about that. But so that they are essentially in a situation where if they are served by a community water system, they are able to subdivide to create a third lot. And if they are not served by a community water system, they are too small to subdivide. And these properties are located just south of the Eagle Cliff Water System. That the municipality runs it that qualifies as a community water system. And so these properties. Because they go here, they had. Applied to subdivide to create a third lot, and this is intentionally how this third lot would be situated where there's lot one, lot two, and lot three, where currently there's two lots. So essentially, lot two is created out of a split between the two properties. And and they applied to subdivide, and they were granted permission to subdivide, provided. Certain conditions were met. It's called a preliminary layout review or a PLR. And one of those conditions was that the properties join. Essentially, the merged Cove Bay and Eagle Cliff system that had been proposed and is still proposed. At which point they would comply with the land use by law regulations and be permitted to subdivide. And essentially, that merger and that connection has been put on hold until the Cove Bay Water Treatment Plant is commissioned. And so this this application, the subdivision, had all the pieces ready, all the conditions were met, they had all the covenants lined up and everything ready to go, and essentially we're on hold waiting for the Cove Bay Treatment Plant to proceed. And at some point, the applicant decided that they would like to proceed independently from that, rather than wait for the treatment plant to be completed. And so they applied to change the zoning and change the OCP to permit subdivision to go ahead. And I'll just back up to say in the OCP. These are designated rural residential. And so similar to our SR two zoning. The RS Rural Residential Land Use Designation in the OCP. Calls for a one hectare average parcel size for lots not served by a community water system, and it calls for a. A smaller, so essentially one acre or a point four hectare average lot size for lots that are served by a community water system. So so same thing in terms of needing amendments to to these policies in our OCP as well as the the land use by law regulations. And then similar to other applications you've seen, one of the things that we consider in the application is the conservation development policy. And which calls for essentially it's our nature needs half. Policy, so it calls for protection with a goal of protecting half of the property from. Future development with the goal with an emphasis on any environmentally sensitive areas or undisturbed areas. And so what we proposed when we came to council is best, the best compliance for this would be a protective covenant on properties. So that fifty percent of the total area is protected from development, similar to a rezoning application you've seen recently for Collins Road. And the proposal was protecting Bluff Creek and the setback on both sides of the creek, so the bluff creek goes through the property. And then undisturbed areas of the western end of the property as it rises up into the crown land. And so the applicant has sort of mapped out what that would look like. So you see bluff creek here passing through. Close to the house on fourteen twenty eight and the building site on fourteen thirty, but it cuts sort of this angle through to come down to equal cliff, so to protect that lower part of the property. With the creek threat and to protect the upper part of the property as it goes up into Crown Land. And here's just the the air rough area size. So the total. Parcels are about twenty thousand square meters and the covenant would be about ten thousand square meters or fifty percent of the total area. Terms where we are, we introduce this to council in April, we're referring to the committees or to the APC here. And before we would start the bylaw process with council, which would see refers to Alan's Trust and potentially back to this committee as well. And so I'll stop sharing there and open for any. Discussions.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Daniel or? Mr. Pullman, can I call you Randy? Just to even. Okay, for Randy. Brenda.
In the diagram of the properties, it looks like the well is actually not on either of those properties. Is that correct?
So the well is on fourteen twenty eight Eagle Cliff Road.
Yeah, alright, it in one of the maps, it appeared to be off the property. Not sure why that is. But I was just curious about that.
Just I guess a question from me would be, you know, typically we would see some sort of a scheme, development scheme for your ideas for the land? And the properties? Post? Rezoning? Do you have anything like that?
Well, there is a a structure on fourteen twenty eight currently. That's where I live with my family. We have a building permit approval for construction on fourteen thirty for again, a. Single family residence with secondary dwelling. And then the if the subdivision wouldn't be successful, it would it would be in the same realm, it would be a modest house that. That ideally would be used for long term rental for Bowen Island evidence. That would be the ideal situation. Obviously, things change over time, but that's the goal.
So that goal would be under your ownership?
Yes.
And management? Until if and when it's sold? Or what have you? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Martin, I'll just say in the subdivision application, but I don't think I've included it with council. Randy has developed as part of the subdivision work, like you have a plan, but essentially it's the septic plan, but it's showing like a building footprint on those the two vacant lots. Are sort of planned out that like this is where the house would go, and this is where the septic would go. And I just don't know that it's transferred over to the rezoning application.
I have another.
Oh, Brenda.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I I have another question. And this I think is more for Daniel, and that is. When? Restrictive covenants are placed on land. I guess I have a couple of questions about that. Who structures the wording for those covenants? Is that something that's done by the municipality or the municipalities? Lawyer? And? Yeah, that's my first part of my question.
Sure. Yes, so our municipal lawyer will draft them. Typically, we'll send others similar like what I'll do is I'll send similar ones that I've done in the past and say we've went. Might be one of these, but for this property.
And I guess my other question is. Once a covenant is put into place. Is and I'm not speaking, this is a general question, not particular to this property. Who monitors compliance with covenants? Is it complaint? Is it complaint driven similar to by law enforcement?
To yeah, to some extent, it's complaint driven. It's. I would say then it's like it's monitored a time of application for something else. So like. If there's ever building permit, building permit, site alteration permit, that's something that we. We actively monitor and check that they are compliant. Yeah, but in terms of like no disturbance. Or no unpermitted works, it's largely complaint driven.
And then I guess my final question, and again. This isn't so much about this particular application, although it's prompted by the environmental. Restrictions that were noted regarding the timing of construction. And. I know that there was a. Recommendation, I think probably it's a stronger thing than a recommendation, a suggestion. In the environmental report that there should be an environmental monitor. On site. And so again, my question is about enforcement. Who is responsible for ensuring that there is a monitor on site during construction? And I'm assuming that. Probably someone is not there each and every day of construction.
Yeah, I think I'll say typically like I think that report was done for subdivision and possibly even for like development permit, and Randy can correct if I'm wrong, but. So if it's work that we require as part of a permit, so it was like a subdivision, they say this work is going to be done, they have an environmental report. And it requires monitoring. We require then the monitor to notify the municipality like when they've been employed for a project. And after a pre-construction meeting. And then to some extent, it's it's like professional reliance on the environmental monitor. To determine like when they need to be there. So sometimes they say, well, I need to be there every day, and sometimes they say, okay, I've sort of laid out the silk fencing and I'm comfortable with you proceeding, and I'll check back in. And so it depends on on the project.
Okay, thank you.
Kirsty, do you have anything?
Unmute myself. No, I don't. I think I feel very sorry for the proponent with all of the mess. And mess that's gone on with the Cove Bay Water System. I think it's a. Really, I that's the people that caught in these get get caught in these messes that I really feel sorry for. But I certainly don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Daniel, I. Just to. I had three things. Firstly, you talked about the building envelope and the septic location and so on. Can they? Or are they already can conditions of the subdivision? Approval?
Yeah, Randy, we have to refresh my memory.
Or they covered by the building permit?
Yeah, typically at subdivision coastal health will require septic covenants. And I don't remember if that's the case, but that was the case for Randy's case. So typically in a subdivision, we will covenant the septic areas. And you're not allowed to do anything like you're not allowed to build a building. In those areas because coastal health is concerned that there's always space for a type one septic system and a reserve septic system. And then. Typically, we don't. We don't covenant the building envelopes. But you have to have planned it a time of septic so that you don't. Yeah, so that you have a like typically through the subdivision stage, we want them to show that there is a viable location for a house. And it's not normally that it's you're restricted to that location, but we need you to show. That like you could build a house, and so you're not like some of the lots we have on bone that were subdivided in the twenties that are, you know, are a cliff. We would we would require like building envelopes more that's like geotechnically. Related, which isn't the case in this house or this slot or these lots. There was a geotech report done. And I think it had some general recommendations, but it wasn't. Like there's some lots in bone that do get fairly restrictive in terms of. Where the geotech says you can build, but not in this case.
Okay, I I think we can proceed. I I though it did occur to me, I would have loved to have had a chance to go see the land and rush that, but I think we can proceed today. And. The reason I think that. Just to. Oh, the other thing is Brenda mentioned the conditions. I I wonder she mentioned some of the recommendations in the environmental report. Are any of those recommendations? Do you think? Should any of them become conditions of the subdivision approval? Or are they covered off by the building permit process and so on?
You have notes in front of me. I'm trying to remember which are condition like some of them potentially what we could we could do as part of the rezoning like the rezoning is says there's going to be a protective covenant. It could incorporate the environmental assessment recommendations like. I would have to review it, I think, to see what.
Okay, well, why don't we just leave it at that general level? And I assume I assume that the environmental covenant would be the same. Whether this land is on the Cove Bay system or not, right?
Yes.
Okay. And 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 that's the crux of it is that. If. This is done. If we if we recommend this approval or council approves this particular subdivision, and then the Cove Bay. Situation is resolved and Eagle Cliff joins Cove Bay, which I understand is. Pretty much the intention of the municipality, no matter what. Then it would comply, right?
And it 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 yes, if like if the Cove Bay section went ahead, and then if.
Yeah.
Still wanted to join the system. Like this would mean that it wouldn't before it was a requirement that they join, whereas if the rezoning went ahead. It would then sort of be at the applicant's option.
Okay, Randy, what is your thoughts about joining the?
Well, it's been our intention to to do so, I think, for two years now that we've been waiting. Willing to do it. And I think the rezoning, I mean, if if you're not familiar with the properties, we're. We're pretty. Much alone up up on top of Eagle Cliff. It's a private driveway that goes up. And there are other properties that are undeveloped there. And I think the the ideal situation would be if all those properties wanted to eventually join the Cove Bay. Or Eagle Cliff Water System. It just takes a little bit of financial pressure off of. Of just us to bring up the water, and we could probably plan it a little bit better. So. I think in that sense, it would make sense to eventually join the Cove Bay and Eagle Cliff Water System. And the rezoning just affords us more flexibility at this time and and allows us to proceed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone have anything further to say? Brenda, again?
Yeah, I I would also like to, you know, add a little bit to what Kirsty said. I too have a lot of sympathy for the property owners who probably brought bought the property, thinking it would be no no problem. To join the community water system, and then we all know what's happened with Cove Bay. Secondly, you had asked Michael about. Whether we wanted to say anything about the conditions that are suggested in the environmental report that was prepared. And I I mean, I think we should because otherwise what's the point of including those recommendations? On, you know, how best to conduct construction so as to mitigate any impact. On the environment. I I mean. So I I. And I guess I'm also have a question maybe for Daniel as well. In terms of. Is that? When an environmental report is prepared and submitted? Does the municipality commonly require those types of recommendations to be followed for things like? Construction scheduling? And and things of that nature?
And yes, yes, we do. Like if it's for a subdivision, we typically will then have like an environmental. Covenant. Placed on title that requires conditions that, you know, so it's like. For this report would have or if this subdivision, I think we had septic and a septic covenant and a geotech and a geotech covenant and environmental and environmental covenant. That's my memory. And that that's sort of typical. So like for a subdivision to go ahead, the approving officer has to be satisfied that it won't cause. And I forget the wording, it's in the land title act, but it's like you can't cause harm to the national environment. So typically, we we require environmental assessment, and if there are. Like concrete recommendations. Then we would require them as covenants.
Okay, good. My my sense is that the commission is supportive of this application. And I'm wondering, really, the the one condition that jumps out at me is the one that Brenda and I have highlighted, and that is that. That. Daniel consider conditions arising from recommendations of the environmental report. And it occurs to me that perhaps the most important recommendation is the monitor. Because that will cover everything off. The monitor will bring to municipalities attention. Anything that's. Inconsistent with the environmental report. What what do others think? Are there any other? Comments or conditions that? I I don't want to. I don't want to require Randy to join the Cove Bay system. When it's available for two reasons. One is I know from our own. Community water system, it can be very expensive for an individual property owner. Who is unable to ally with other adjacent property owners. And. But I'll just leave it at that. It it's cheaper to get your own water out of your own well. But it's also way more reliable and safe to have it from a community system. So you you will balance all that in the future when you have an opportunity to consider it. So any, so I have the one comment. That. We we recommend that the conditions of the subdivision approval. Include. Or why don't we just say subdivision approval, take into account the recommendations? In the environmental report. And then we'll we'll let council decide which recommendations are important to them. Although I I think we might. Include including the appointment of a. Monitor. What's the technical term environmental monitor?
Environmental monitor, yeah.
Is is that not automatic, Daniel? Or not?
It's not. I guess.
Like it depends what a monitor is.
Yeah, I I guess I would say like if if it's important for council, their opportunity to require it is it is at the rezoning stage. And then there are opportunities for staff to require it through the subdivision stage, but for councils. And the APC that your your chance to recommend it is at a rezoning stage, so it would make sense to include it.
I just don't want to add any more owners' things that aren't necessary on.
Well, it sounds like it has to be done anyway.
Yeah, we we already have an environmental monitor that is part of the project.
Okay.
Sorry, Michael, you just had you use a different word to employment. I thought that.
Appointment.
Appointment, thank you, sorry. Okay.
So. Since the applicant already has a monitor engaged, could this be a little bit more affirmative?
Yeah, like particularly the appointment or?
Sure.
Yeah, the condition, because it right now it says that. Council.
Okay, well, why don't we make it a separate condition to give it emphasis? So we'll just say in particular. The conditions of the subdivision approval. Will require.
But we don't want to make it. Sound like we need to have someone there every day that there's anyone doing anything on the property.
No, in fact, I specifically just it did. I thought Daniel's answer was that the environmental monitor takes responsibility for.
It was. You did say that.
Just another point. So further to this, I think we're talking a very. About a particular situation. Relevant to this particular application. Would we be sort of setting a precedent here for other future applications of having? To provide a monitor? If we do so for this case?
Unfortunately, we're not a court of superior jurisdiction, so. No, no, no presidential value.
Yeah. And I don't think we can better our own discretion either.
There you go. How's that for lawyer talk, eh, guys?
Um, Sarah, can you change subdivision to rezoning approval? I think that's what.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
And also, are we happy with the start of that sentence? Is that a bit?
No, I think it should say that the conditions of the rezoning approval.
Thank you.
And the subdivision up in the previous bullet point, too.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
So I've sort of taken the subdivision for granted, I guess. And that the conditions refer. Yeah. Okay. So any any further comments or editing and? I'd love to express sympathy for Randy's position with the water system, but I don't think.
Thank you.
I don't think that's a. Purview of. This commission. But anyway, any further comments or questions before I call the motion? Okay, could somebody please move this? That'll be Brenda. Seconded by.
I can second.
Okay, thanks, Martin. All in favor? That'll be Kirsty and me voting. Good, and. As I understand it, Sarah, the minutes don't indicate who moved the motions, right?
No, not for, sorry, I'll just unshare.
Okay.
I not for not typically for committee meetings.
Yeah, in my previous life, I. Was involved in governance and we. Over the objection of many people took. The movers and secunders out of motions and. My goodness, it made the discussion a lot shorter. Okay, well, Randy, thank you very much for your. Attendance today and answering our questions and. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you very much for all of your time and thank. You and and have a good evening.
Okay. Good evening. You're free to, oh, I was gonna say he's free to stay. Can I ask Mr. Al to turn his camera on so he can introduce himself to us? I don't think we this is. Is that unfair? Is that unfair?
But he's muted as well, so.
Uh, sooner or later, he's going to be presenting an application to us, so.
He may not fully be here.
Okay, well, I don't want to put the pressure on him. Uh, any word from Betty there, Sarah?
Uh, I'll just check my email. No, I haven't had another email from her and she's still not here, so I think we can assume that she's had trouble with the ferry.
Oh, surprise.
Safe assumption these days.
Hmm.
Yeah, 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 I got caught by that four hour delay with the uh, ferry using its left and right legs at the same time.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, oh, that's right. I think I saw you there on the ferry in the end, um, briefly. Uh, okay, folks, uh, the next item is the official community plan update project. And um. I don't know, do you have a sort of an introductory statement or something like that that you'd like to make, Daniel?
I do, I do have a little spiel. I'll go through. Um, oh, and Xerxes just here.
Oh, okay. Hello, pleased to meet you, um. And welcome.
Hi, uh, yeah, I'm Xerxes, um. New planner, been living here for a few weeks now. Um, and here mainly just for my own fun and because I have a little better to do on a Tuesday evening.
Yes, and and we all love here for that reason, but yeah, well, thanks for sure. Thanks for sure, uh, for. I didn't mean to embarrass you or anything, but welcome. Uh, I hope you enjoy the show. And do feel free if you have a comment to make. I don't, there is no hierarchy here. Okay, so the over to you now, Daniel.
Hey, um, I just wanted, we wanted to come to this committee and a couple of our other committees. Um, one to sort of bring you up to speed on our project to update the OCP and then second to um, solicit your feedback on where we are. So, so. All right. Um, so we have, we are in the process of doing this um, OCP update. So we have formed what's called the OCP Steering Committee and Betty is actually one of the members on the steering committee. Um, so it's too bad she can't be here to join us. Um, and the steering committee, one of their first things they did was to put out an RFP for a lead consultant for the project. And after doing um, some selection of that and an interview process, um, they hired, we hired McLeany consultants to lead us through it. Um, and so this is McLeany's slide on showing the phases of this OCP project. Um, so phase one was done in the fall and winter. So we did background review, um, assessing the current OCP, do did work on infrastructure and base mapping. Um, and prepared an engagement communication plan. And so phase two. Um, has just launched, which is looking at sort of big, broad engagement. And so the focus on that has been on um, vision and goals. In the OCP, so we have a survey that's out now that is looking at um, feedback from people on the vision of the 2011 OCP. Um, is that still the vision for for Bowen Alouders today? Um, the goals of the the OCP and then ask some questions particularly around um, environmental issues and then um, housing issues. Especially given uh, provincial legislation changes um, that have put more like more strict requirements on housing provisions and OCPs than have ever been before. So that's phase two. Phase three then is looking to actually draft um, OCP outline, draft OCP policies. And then doing a round two of public engagement on actual drafted policies. Um, so we'll be looking to doing that. Here it says summer, winter, I've sort of been aiming at fall, winter, twenty twenty five, when we actually come, we're going to come back for round two of engagement. And then phase four will be going forward um, to actually have a finalized draft OCP that does the. Um, all the bylaw adoption steps that it required for an OCP. Um, so our round one engagement is now live. Um, there is an online survey and an online engagement hub. So I would invite all the APC members to please, um, after this meeting, fill out your survey. Um, we're looking to get here from as many people on Bowen as possible individually and and together, so. And we've been doing pop-up engagement and will continue to be doing pop-up engagement, but we really want to hear directly from as many people as possible. Um, right, and this is just our little blurb of some of the pop-up events. So Betty was actually at um. The artisan or at, sorry, at Hood Point on Saturday doing engagement. Um. On Thursday, Xerxes will be riding the Queen of Capilano to um, gather feedback from people on the ferry. And we'll keep doing stuff until June ninth is when the survey will close. Um, all right, and then this is where I wanted to look for people's feedback on some of the specific. Um, things in our, in our OCP. So one of the things we are asking people is about the values in our current OCP. Um, and the current OCP vision statement. And I've realized when we do this, I can't see the full wording of it, but essentially our OCP has six. Um. Six visions in it. And um, so what we've been asking people, um, in the survey itself, we ask. Um, yeah, to rank the top three and then we go up to the pop-up engagement, we're asking people to to place sticky dots on what are the three? Um. What three vision, what what are most important to you? And then um, discussion about what are what are missing from the current vision statement in the OCP? Um. So thinking about, you know, what has changed, what what do we want to hear more of? Um, and then we have some specific questions we go through for people. So we say, um. You know, what do you like most about being on Bowen? What's missing on Bowen? What is needed to help make people make it easier to get around the island without a vehicle? Um, and then just asking generally like, what do you want to see in Bowen? It's kind of a fun question, especially if you do pop-up engagement. If younger people, you can hear what 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 you want to see on Bowen. Um. But I'm actually gonna just stop sharing for a second here and I'm gonna find our actual text of our OCP so I can pull that up instead. Um, but I guess maybe I'll ask the APC first off the bat. It's like, how familiar are people with? Um, with the OCP? Is it something people have read and are familiar with? Or is it like a new? Um. Sort of a foreign document.
Well, I I'll start being honest. I have a lovely full color version of it that. I got, I think, several years ago. Um, and I read it at that time and then I've read lots and lots of bits and pieces of it, mostly with a view to. Dealing with changes to it, to be honest.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, one of the um, one of the things in our background report from McLeany that they noted is is our OCP is like, is longer than average. I think so when they like they counted up, you know, how many policies, how many goals in it, it it's quite a bit lengthier than. Um, than, you know, many others. And so, you know, it's always the the goal's always like, how can we make a more concise and readable document? But then I know through the drafting process, you go, well, we have to include, you know, well, it's important to include these things. So it's always a little bit of tension between being. Um, trying to be concise and then trying to be, make sure you don't forget anything.
I and I'm just wondering about context here. Now, obviously, we're all free to fill out the survey. Um, it's anonymous, although we do give details as to age and so on. Um, but what what is the commission's specific role? In the preparation of the OCP other than go for it?
Yeah, I mean, I think we wanted to come initially to hear if the commissioner, you know, members of the commission wanted to share any thoughts they had on sort of. Vision goals of OCP and then, and then we want to come back when we have actual policies to go through in more depth. Um, so this was partly to say, make you aware of the process, where we are in the process, um, have that initial. Um, touch point um, in terms of, you know, policy direction and then to come back for more um, in-depth discussion. And maybe, I mean, most likely, probably several meetings, I would imagine. Like I could see, we could do, you know, we could do an APC meeting on a certain topic and then come back on another topic or. We could structure it something like that when we.
Okay, because I I I don't think today we are going to pass a motion that comprises the commission's recommendations from the OCP. Uh, but maybe if people have ideas that the steering committee, and that's who they'd be directed to, right? Uh, consider then, uh, and and I suppose. Not being immodest, but I guess we have had some experience with all this stuff, planning and so on and so. Who wants to start? Brenda?
Well, I I kind of feel like um, you do in terms of. I mean, I've read through many sections of our OCP, our current OCP. Um, but over a number of years, and I haven't read the whole thing front to back ever in one sitting. Uh, as you point out, it is a rather lengthy document. Um, I seem to recall there being some discussion um, a number of years ago now about um. Uh, one topic was like protection of Bowen's beaches. And then there was going to be a mapping exercise of actually identifying all of Bowen's beaches. And I I think that there may be little bits and pieces of work that were kind of intended to follow after the last OCP that were never completed. Um, and I, I guess what I would like to see with this round is that, you know, hopefully. Uh, there won't be those little bits and pieces of, you know, uncompleted work. Because, you know, it seems to me that sometimes it never gets completed, so. Um, yeah, that's, I guess, a preliminary comment that I would make.
Okay, and that's.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and I think that's almost one of the goals of the update. Um, project. So we have, yeah, there are some things in the OCP where it says, like, council will consider adopting something, whatever it may be. Um, or even our OCP has several development permit areas designated, um, and when the OCP was adopted. Um, staff came to council with the OCP bylaw and then bylaws for three different development permit areas. Um, and at the time, one of them was adopted and two were not. So council determined that they didn't actually feel ready to adopt the other two. And I know that, yeah, and they have several other parts of the OCP that says council will consider by way of future amendment doing these things. Um, and it's, it probably gets hard after, you know, after ten years, it gets hard to say, oh, we're gonna do this. This was called for in the OCP. This is what we have to do. It's like, well, we didn't do it for ten years, maybe, you know, maybe it's not still a priority. So you're right. I mean, that's the goal is like to reaffirm, like if things are still the direction we want to go, reaffirm, and then there's more. Um, impetus to lead from that, whereas I think the older it gets, the harder it is for council to say, that's our strategic plan for the year is doing these policies. Because we say, well, something else has come up. We didn't know about ten years ago, we want to focus instead.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I mean, I know that this is a huge project, so. Um, you know, the 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 OCP committee may very well say. There are some things that we're not going to be able to get to, but I guess my fear is that if that happens, we're going to get the same situation. Where the committee felt strongly enough to make a recommendation about something. And yet it never was implemented, so. That's my comment is that I really hope we don't see that on this go-round.
Right. Uh, Kirsty, Martin, Martin?
Yeah, perhaps I would, it, you know, it is a. Relatively complex, long document, but you know, if it serves what we need here. Then that's what it should be. I mean, I think I think at the same time, if there are aspects to the OCP that are no longer applicable. Maybe they'd be. Removed. But, you know, not notwithstanding that, I think, um, you know, its complexity, if it really reflects. Our place, then. You know, that that's that's what it is, so.
And I know, like, one of my challenges with the OC, with our current OCP is actually, you know, would advocate for it being longer. Is that I I have challenges sometimes that some of our land use designations don't have any associated policies with them. So I find challenging when there's an application and it's like, this is the OCP designation and it says, okay, so what do we want to happen in that OCP designation? And it's pretty silent on some areas, which makes it a challenge, because.
Yeah. Well, McLeany perhaps can tie that in together. Is that their role here or?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's one of their, like, when we did interviews, um. Yeah, one of the things the committee really liked was their, um, like some of their policy focus and even they came to the. Like interview and initial meetings with like suggestions for how to how to phrase policies better and um, some of their policy experts, so. And that was, yeah, that that should be part of their role is helping us through that.
Okay, uh, Kirsty?
Well, I'm pretty jaded by the OCP in its entirety, um, over the various times that it's been done, so I think that's all I'll say.
Uh, and that actually raises a question. Some people regard the OCP as if it's the constitutional document and. I I don't know, binding and driving all the other legislative initiatives, but that's not quite true, is it, that? I mean, the the council can override it and amend it at any time, so it doesn't have that kind of constitutional strength.
Right, I mean, that's true, as compared to a constitution, it's, yeah, it's supposed to be, you know, the guiding policy document for council. Um. And so council can't take action, like can't adopt a bylaw that's not consistent with the OCP.
Without amending the OCP though.
Correct, yeah.
You see my point, uh?
Right.
Okay, uh. Well, I could tell you. And I I mean, I really really look forward to seeing what this thing looks like. Uh, the one comment I would make, and it's not about the OCP, but. I I would love it if the steering committee could work out a way of getting input from younger people. Uh, I mean, it's it's my generation that tends to get. Well, except for Kirsty, my generation gets agitated about these things. Um, and and I think one of the reasons the plan is so long is one of the first jokes I heard when I moved here was if you get. Ten Boweners in a room, you'll get fifteen opinions. And um, I think that was, the OCP was there to cover off everything that had been raised at the time. That's my impression from the twenty eleven version of it. And and that's not essentially efficient, but. I mean, I'm not going to have to live with this darn thing as long as the 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 thirty-year-olds are, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Um. The other thing I wonder is how much? Have, has the steering committee looked into what's actually happening out there? With construction, with housing prices, with people moving to the island and from the island? I mean, it uh, it may well be that what's happening in the rest of the world makes our OCP largely irrelevant and purely aspirational.
Hmm, um, like I know the the baseline reports McLeany did looked at, like, you know, development, past development on Bowen.
Okay, is that report available to the public?
Yes, if you go to that site, um, I'll post the link here.
Okay.
Put it in the chat. Nope, that's not it. Let me find the link.
Okay, and while you're doing that, did you have something there, Brenda, you wanted to raise?
Um, yeah, I guess I I just wanted to voice my disagreement with your perspective on the OCP not. Um, being the the constitutional document, I think you called it. Um, for planning purposes, because I actually do think that the OCP. Um, is intended uh, to be a a a binding uh, document and that it is intended. Uh, to guide policy and planning on the island. So um, and and I recognize uh, that it can be amended and indeed it has been uh, amended or. Um, strict compliance with it has not always been required with some of the applications that come before us, but. I mean, I think uh, like, what's the point in having it, um, if it's not intended to be um, a a binding, guiding document? Um, that, uh, you know, we all have to comply with, so.
You know what? I don't think you and I really disagree. I think I'm just concerned that um. Uh, it can be amended. If anything, I would urge that amendments be kept to a minimum and only when necessary. Um. In any event, uh, the fact is, I remember. Harold Macmillan became Prime Minister of England and he had all kinds of promises that he made to the public and then the Suez Crisis happened. And a reporter asked him. Uh, first challenged him, said, why did you keep these promises? What happened? And he said, events. And that's it. We just don't know what's going to happen in in the future, but uh, no, I. Maybe I stated my case too strongly. I I do believe that amendments are still required, but they should be kept to a minimum. To maintain the integrity of the OCP. As you say, it is the, the document. Um. So. I don't know if 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 council wants to hear from us at this stage. Um, what I'm hearing from people is that um. The the, the the OCP. the the O C P be cautious about not leaving follow up items to be completed at a future date after the council approval of the O C P. Keeping in mind that there were such follow up matters from the twenty eleven O C P, right? Is that the right year? That were not completed? But I guess these are really not, we haven't really talked about divisions and goals. I I I don't mean to just elude that, but I I personally am comfortable with them as they stand. I don't know how other people feel.
Well, that that would be a goal when, oh, okay. That would be a goal of the new O C P. Yes.
Okay.
But not on not not on the twenty eleven one.
Yeah, right. Did you catch that, Sarah?
Yeah, I'm just looking. Daniel, did you? It says twenty eleven. Is that?
That's okay.
Yeah.
It can just be like the following initial feedback on the O C P update project.
Yeah.
Okay, so after the goal of the new O C P.
Yeah, would be to avoid process is good, would be to avoid leaving follow up avoid having items to be followed up after the approval of the O C P. Well, that's not very good. Does somebody have a clearer way of saying that followed up?
Yeah.
That the goal of the new O C P process would be to avoid having items. Why did you say requiring follow up after the approval of the O C P?
Yeah, having items requiring follow up.
After the approval of the O C P? I like Martin's comment that although the plan should cover as much as possible, it does not have to be comprehensive. It does not have to cover every single possibility. So
You're gonna want to change this language.
But I think he ended that, and Martin, correct me if I'm wrong, by saying that if it has to be a lengthy document, you know, to accurately reflect the input, then so be it. But I'll let Martin speak for himself on that.
Exactly, yes.
Why do we add that? To cover every single possibility. But however.
But if it needs to be comprehensive in certain areas, then it should be.
Okay, why don't you take out the word comprehensive? Because that is a bit misleading of this. The update does not have to cover every single possibility. Every single future possibility. However, yeah, however, well, I guess all possibility is the future, aren't they?
Going to say that, yes.
The update does not have to cover every single possibility.
Would aim be a better word? And possibility?
Sorry, just just repeat that. I just I missed that.
How about?
Just just asking whether aim you know, target or targeted idea aim.
Why don't we say every single Bowen Island issue?
Yes. Community issue.
Even better, yeah. And then then however. If it needs to be a lengthy document to capture complexities of our community.
That's okay.
So be it.
Yeah, then so be it.
Okay. And the next one that I heard people talk about is, and this is from Daniel, I think. The 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 it is important to identify those provisions of the new O C P that require completion of relevant policies prior to approval of the O C P. And I think I think that's that would be wise. People are okay with that one?
I I'm not, yeah.
Well, there there is also the legislative aspect of this from the province.
Yeah.
Kind of falls under this point, but.
That Bill fifteen, I I just can't make sense of it. Oh, I I think provisions rather than conditions, Sarah. Okay, so this is sort of guidance to the steering committee. Is that what we're providing, Daniel? Okay.
Yeah.
More to follow, I bet.
Yes.
And actually, you know, Brenda, the the discussion you and I had, I wonder, I don't know how to express it, but it would be important to at some point, maybe it's early days now, to to resolve this constitutional issue one way or the other. Either by minimizing amendments and making it a policy that amendments will be minimized and so that people who are applying for something that will require amendment to the O C P, they need to know that it might be a tough road for them.
Well, for, I can say from my perspective, you know, there is a lot of hardship entailed encountering an O C P in a project by default. So
Yeah.
You know, that that's just it's easy to follow prescriptive guidelines or policies in a project. If you're diverging from that, then it becomes difficult.
Yeah. And and that's why I think it's important that policies be ideally, every provision would have a related policy.
Yeah, but even even if there is a way around it through, you know, council changing policies, whether it's for a particular project or in general.
Okay.
It's still always much easier to just follow the rules.
Daniel, this amendment of the O C P just requires a simple majority of council, right?
It does. It also requires approval by the Island Justice Executive Committee.
Yeah, because I I don't want this to be written out, but it one one way out of the dilemma that Brenda and I find ourselves in is requiring that amendments to the O C P require a super majority of two thirds or three quarters of the council.
Yeah, it's like it's laid out in the community charter. And then some of it is like the provision that like council can't fetter future council, like council can't pass an O C P and say, and we can't amend it for five years because council has to consider applications as they come in.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's that challenge between being legislative and regulatory at the same time. Okay, well, I I hope they the steering committee understands the spirit in which this advice is given. They're free to, as my 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 dad always says to me, I'm I'm free to give you advice and you're free to ignore it.
So is this is this a formal recommendation? Are we?
I I just say I like the idea of feedback. It's
I think it's because this is in the council referral. It's on. Yeah, it's coming to.
Yeah, unless people want, I'm not going to bring anything to a vote. I don't want to, how could I put it? These are just our ideas. We were asked to provide our ideas that we have. Okay, anything? Have I missed anything? I'd love to think to be written in plain language and clear, but that's up to the drafters. Well, I'm sorry Betty can't be here because I would have loved her input on it from the steering committee point of view. She could have told us we were out to lunch or we're doing well.
Or don't make more work for us. I suspect that might be what she might say.
I think so. I I can't believe anybody got on that steering committee without knowing that it was a
Huge project.
Yeah, exactly. And an important one, too. Okay, because I like to believe that we live in a fairly unique place. And so that means we can't just do cookie cutter stuff. Okay. Anything further? Kirsty, do you have any advice for the steering committee other than get it done?
No, I I just, I think our area of the island is being inflicted by we, there weren't houses here, so there won't ever be houses here. And that and that was as a result of the I C P, O C P originally continued and it's stifled anybody being able to do anything at all. So that's why I'm so jaded.
Okay, well, and I I I expect we'll have some more specific recommendations as we go forward, but it's early days yet. And yeah, I have a some, someone has asked me the other day, is Kate Hill part of the Snug Cove Village?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know. Okay, anything further before I seek a motion to adjourn? Oh, I should have a look at the agendas. That's why we have one, right? Okay, information item is the strategic plan. And there are no questions? I don't assume. Okay, are we done?
Dinner time.
Yeah.
Well, I think Brenda's already was, did you finish your dinner?
Sorry, I couldn't wait.
No, good for you.
I knew I was gonna have to go back to work after this meeting, so I had a window of opportunity and I took it.
Seems to me somebody who has to go back to work would be an ideal person to move adjournment.
Yeah, and I will.
All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Bye bye now.
Bye.